Any comments? Roll call.
Byler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Constance.
Yes.
Hester.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Mr. Heck, do you want to do financial reports?
We'll approve the following financial reports for November and December as listed below, four one through four thirteen.
Any comments? Roll call.
Byler.
Yes.
Chris Miller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bass.
Yes.
Constance.
Yes.
Hester.
Yes.
Palmer.
Yes.
Superintendent's report, Dr. Nesse.
We have three presentations for you tonight. The first one I'll turn over to our elementary principals. We have been trying to, for the last year and a half or so, work to build an after-school program, before and after-school care program for parents. We know it's a need. It's something last spring, we did a survey, engaged parents and families, and there was interest. Unfortunately, we just couldn't make it happen, and Lindsay was able to connect with the organization that they're going to present tonight. And we think it's a unique opportunity, a great opportunity for us.
They're working on bringing up our team.
Tell you what, once he was promoted, technology went down.
Yeah. So we'll get started, and then we'll just track up if we need to. So, yes, so we're here to propose to you a before and after-school program for both Penburneville Elementary and Bethel Elementary. And so, feeling a bit inspired by this year with Dennis and Tim really focusing on science and X, you know, golden circle, we really wanted to start you off with the why. And, you know, why you did it is important, and what research is saying as well. So, there's a ton of research to support the positive impact of before and after-school program has on students that participate. And so, you know, I did gather some research from Harvard Graduate School of Education just to kind of support that, so I wanted to share that with you. Participation in after-school programs influencing academic performance in a number of ways, including better attitudes towards school and higher educational aspirations, higher school attendance rates and low retardiness rates, less disciplinary actions such as suspension, lower dropout rates, better performance in school as measured by achievement test scores and grades, significant gains in academic achievement test scores, greater on-time promotion, improved homework completion, and deeper engagement in learning. Research has also shown that participation in these programs is associated with decreased behavioral problems, improved social and communication skills, better relationships with parents and teachers, increased self-confidence, self-esteem, and self-efficacy, lower levels of depression and anxiety, development of initiative, and improved feelings and attitudes towards self and school.
And just to put a personal level on it, I'm a product of both before and after-school care. If that wasn't offered to me as a child, both my parents would not be able to work full-time. I like to think that it helped me shape me, the version that I am today, giving me that opportunity to get some extra help after school, whether it was academic or social.
So, what else? So, not only all of that, but they also offer that after-school or before-school childcare on campus for families. And I need, that's something that we've identified and explored in both the Penburneville and Bethel communities. So, Dr. Nesse mentioned we did put a survey out in last spring. So, fifty-six point nine percent of participants represented Penburneville in their results, and then forty-three point one percent of participants represented Bethel. So, we just wanted to share some of those results with you. Forty-five families were interested in school-age care. Twenty-seven families cited that they were not interested in school care that may be in the future. Thirty-one families are interested in before-school care five days a week, which we've identified as full-time. And then twenty-eight families were interested in after-school care five days a week.
And another, just a Bethel connection. Once a month, we have our Kids Club program where we take kids and send them over to the church canteen or to the building, and it's so well-attended, just to have students do something after school. They're with their peers, and they're safe. So, we're looking to partnership with the Healthy Kids Program. It's a high-quality program focused on the core areas of academic enrichment, character and leadership development, that work very congruent with our portrait of a Trojan, and physical fitness. They provided us with a typical schedule where there would be homework help to start off. There would be a snack, academic exploration with STEM and self-discipline, a physical fitness component that focuses on teamwork, nutrition, sports, and free play using the areas of the building that we have.
And I know just speaking from the Penburneville side, we have a lot of students that walk home after school, often going to homes with, you know, no parents and, you know, having trouble getting homework done. So, having an opportunity, being able to offer an opportunity like this, to be able to provide some structure for them after school, I think would be a great opportunity for a lot of families and kids to take advantage of.
So, some options for our families, the before-school program starts as early as six-thirty AM. Now, it'll run from six-thirty to the start of the school day, which would be eight-thirty-three. The after-school program runs from dismissal to as late as six-thirty PM. This program would also run on early dismissal days, and there's some options for families as far as planning it, that they don't have to stay a full day.
So, we did want to do our due diligence with choosing a program that we felt was the best fit for our families as far as programming, but also the best fit and the best offer financially. So, what we wanted to do was give you some information as some cost comparison. So, we explored three different options. We explored the Healthy Kids Program, which is what we're proposing to you this evening. We also looked at two other programs, including one called Right at School and the other being the YMCA. And so, you'll see there we have, it sifted out before-school, full-time, before-school, part-time. So, that full-time is that five days a week. The part-time is, you know, anywhere between two to three days a week. So, if you look at the difference, we have the Healthy Kids Program, full-time before-school is a hundred eighty dollars per month, where Right at School was two hundred forty dollars per month. YMCA is a hundred seventy dollars per week. Before-school, if you're looking at part-time, a hundred forty dollars per month for the Healthy Kids Program, a hundred ninety dollars per month for Right at School, a hundred seventy dollars per week YMCA. If you're looking at after-school, after-school full-time would be two hundred eighty dollars per month for the Healthy Kids Program. Right at School was two hundred eighty-four dollars per month, and then the YMCA was eighty-five dollars per week. After-school part-time is two hundred dollars per month for the Healthy Kids Program. Right at School is two hundred twenty-five dollars per month, and then YMCA is eighty-five dollars per week. They also offer a drop-in rate, so they have fifteen and twenty dollars per day for the Healthy Kids Program. Right at School was about the same, fifteen and twenty dollars per day, and then YMCA was seventy dollars per session.
So, what's for...
On that, if they go both more than that, like, do they get a break?
No, I think they, I think they section it out as like before and after.
So, if they go both, there's no, like, savings or something?
I think I would have to ask, I can definitely pose that question, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I mean, that kind of makes sense, you know, get a real bit of a discount.
How does this compare to our private sector before and after daycare that's in the district currently?
So, there's currently nothing on the Bethel side?
Correct, I'm saying Burn, I, right, with Burn.
And I would have to look at pricing for Little Sprouts, that's the only one that I'm aware of for Little Sprouts. I just know in talking with parents, parents have expressed interest in having something offered through the school or at the school in comparison to utilizing Little Sprouts, not a hundred percent sure on pricing.
What's the definition of, two-part question, a definition of part-time, how many days a week is that?
So, the part-time is between like two to three days, full-time is five days.
And then, six-thirty PM, pick up, is it getting pretty late? Is there a difference between picking up an elementary student at four, or somebody that's there until six PM? Is there a difference in price?
I do not think so, not that I know of.
I guess my thoughts are, you'd have to run another survey and see if, how many parents would be willing, could afford that, or would be willing to pay that before we, before we would approve the financial program.
So, the other, the other nice thing we'll say about the Healthy Kids Program is they have a no, you know, minimum requirement to hold the program for the first year. So, they said even if one student or one family said that, they're willing to hold the program to see, you know, interest and that sort of thing. So, we really appreciated that about the program, at least for the first year, because then it doesn't lock us into anything, and then we can ultimately see what interest is and how it goes.
Are there any grants out there that support, helps support some of that?
That's something that we could explore.
I mean, I know, I know the state pushes sometimes the before-care and the after-care, and I don't know if they have anything available for us.
One thing, just doing a little research here, Little Sprouts, do they even have openings? It says waitlist in Warren apartment. So, when I was looking for a daycare option, they were on waitlist, and I never looked back. How do they staff?
They staff through the program. So, if we were to agree to have the program come, then they would hire, like, in the area. And so, they told us they would, you know, put out opportunities, job posting in the area, and so they opened it up to anyone that would apply. They talked about hiring, you know, our educators in our district that would be interested. So, they staff it themselves.
And they're not a local, just by the area code, they're not a local company, right?
No.
But they partner with other schools, that's their business base, I guess.
They'll guarantee staffing if we would go this route?
As long as they can staff it, yes. Yeah, they get, they take care of the staffing. But that's why we're kind of coming to you early, because ideally and realistically, we'd like to implement this for the start of the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five school year. And they, you know, want that cushion time to be able to put out the information, hire staff, gain interest, and put information out to families.
How do they do that if they're not, boots on the ground, so to speak? If they're, if they're an absentee employer, how do they staff and manage this business? So, talking to them, they have regional managers, and then they would have a manager of our particular two buildings. They go ahead and get the licensing for what they need for the area that they're, that's part of their business balance as well. Are they in any other schools in the Calhoun County area that you're aware of?
So, currently, I believe they're just in one school in Lancaster. I'm not a hundred percent sure of the name of the school, but I don't think they're anywhere near the local.
I think they're in the Columbia Borough School District. So, just to give perspective, like, for Blue Mountain Schools, they run a program, and it's one fifteen a week for full-time before and after school. So, you know, ours would be four sixty, you're talking six hundred, oh, you're talking two thirty, four sixty, so about right on the same. So, I mean, this is, when, in, in looking at that, the Healthy Kids was the cheapest one that we could, we could find. And this is one of the things during kindergarten registration that constantly comes up, like, what do we have before or after school? Because a single parent or both parents that work full-time, and sometimes the school day doesn't let itself. Nice to have a full-time job, unfortunately, just, other than the person that did private in our area, that no longer does it, I don't have an option for them. It's definitely a need, I would...
I had a good idea in that. I would like if you could get a reference from the, at least the other school that's lame as well, see how they, they like the program, which is working for them.
Absolutely.
Just before, before we go on it.
And is there a way to read, would they send you curriculum and stuff? Like, I'm interested in what they're teaching with character development, and I remember some of the other wording that I read before, and just like to see what was there.
I do have, I can look to see if I can find any examples for you. I did give information about, so all in there, yes. So, that's what I was given so far, so I can ask more, more options, I'm interested in reading that.
Back in eleven, eleven to fifteen, twenty fifteen, we had Noah Daycare in Bethel. They charged seventy-five dollars a week. And, but I know, I do know they worked with the county office of Child Services to get grant funding. They, they would do the legwork, get the money from the county for people that were eligible. So, they, but they couldn't sustain it, they didn't have enough, they didn't have enough participation.
You know, the year that I started, they stopped because the enrollment didn't justify what they were paying.
After one year, what would they require for enrollment? You said the first year they're willing to work if we don't even have one, but the second year, what would they require for enrollment?
So, as far as I know, they said it was a one-year minimum, and that, or one-student minimum, or no minimum, whatever. And the second year moving forward, we would have to look to see what interest would be, and then go from there to year. So, it's not a contract or agreement that you sign for a certain amount of time, it shifts year to year. So, we could definitely ask that.
I mean, if they say, hey, the first year we do that minimum, and the second year we need thirty people, that...
Well, then maybe that's another question you could ask.
I think their, I think their perspective was to gauge how much interest there was in the first year, and then do they then have to help offset the first-year costs with the second year to set a minimum? Do you know what I mean? They only get five the first year, then there might be a, you know, a different number that's set for the second year.
Is there a program available in most other districts?
Every school that I've been in so far before I came here have had a before and after-school program.
And is it always a private daycare, basically, that is utilized in one of our rooms? Yeah, so my perspective, except from the rest of the school in Churtenham, there was maybe eight to ten different vans or buses that came and picked up students and took them to various private locations for after-school. The only option that we had at the building was the Second Street Learning Center, which was also a shelter. So, if, just being devil's advocate here, if Noah and Company couldn't have enough enrollment, what's going to be different this time around? Well, we charge it in your rent?
No.
Go ahead. We charge Noah five hundred dollars a month.
A month?
Yeah.
Well, that hurts.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't have any... Let's give them, we charge Noah five hundred dollars a month for the room, where it seems like zero, we're not going to charge anything.
They would prefer not to be in a classroom setting. They would like to use more open areas, such as the cafeteria and gym, and so it's not just going from a classroom setting all day back into a classroom setting.
So, of the, of all three models, none of them, it's all viewed, or the approach taken is, this is a service that we're helping bring to your community, and, you know, the programs are being brought into the school to help parents after school, and so that none of the models out there call for districts charging for the use of facilities. It's more viewed as a, these companies are being brought in by the district to provide a, an independent service, but a service to parents.
And the other question I had, what if a family has three kiddos? Is that, is there a discount for multiple kiddos, or is this the right?
That'd be something that we would further explore. And maybe, maybe I'm just completely out of touch, it just seems like a ton of money.
I could also ask them if they, if they have a few of the county, like, well, funding, as a problem, as a problem. That's what I would try to find in our sector, and that would just explore, I would, apply to the area.
Didn't, didn't that, the one paper you had, wasn't there two papers that you had? Didn't one of them talk about the agreement of pricing?
So, the second packet is the, like, agreement? There's only like three different ones.
Wasn't it, just hoping on how to...
In that folder, you mean, there was two different papers?
I, in the one folder, that's why, where they did not get transferred off of the March board.
No, it was in that mail, a folder ID.
I guess it depends on enrollment.
Are there two different, yes, yeah. I did not see that that is my bad, I will confess. My apologies, I didn't realize there was two.
There's both copies.
Who's called there?
Oh, this is just...
So, this started in two thousand and seven, is that right, by the way?
So, we have some time, so we will get answers. We'll get the answers. Is there a discount for, for and after? What kind of grants are available? Reference from, I believe it's Columbia Borough, and I looked into it. Character development education, I know we had talked to them, and they're willing to, you know, work with us on whatever, you know, we want, don't want, and customize that.
And ultimately, I actually asked specifically about that when we had the meeting, and he explained that it's really not curriculum. It's, they're doing like the homework help, they're, the academic work, they're doing the physical activities, and those skills are woven in through teamwork activities and things that kids are learning just through play or through, you know, working together. So, I'm not a hundred percent sure they'll be able to give me curriculum, but I will ask.
Yeah, I'd be interested in asking, just because it is broken down into three sections. One, academic, two, character, and then three, physical.
Or even their philosophy.
Yeah, yeah, I would like to know like a philosophy statement or...
I mean, we, we did, just so you know, we did kind of explain our demographics, the district, kind of where we, where we stand ideologically, politically, all that. And that wasn't, like, they're not, the look is not to push an agenda or anything like that. You know, they, they kind of understood where we're from, but we will certainly get all that, as well as a multi-discount for kids.
Would you, all right, so if most schools offered this, who do our neighbors use? Who does Fupa Valley, Hamburg, Wiser, Elko, Runway?
Uh, Wiser, I can tell you is looking, where they were looking at Right at School. A lot of the districts, I mean, from their perspective, what they've been a part of, a lot of districts offer, the districts I've been a part of, have never offered programs like this. I can tell you, Twent Valley, Footstown, Conrad, Wiser, we were all looking at Right at School. Right at School wanted a commitment from at least seven school districts in the county for them to come. But they were significantly higher.
I guess that was my thoughts.
Yeah.
If our neighbor used XYZ, and we did, then they only need one manager to run kind of multiple locations. Could it save us any money?
And that was, that was Right at School, that's why they wanted seven.
So, do we have room to house the things they would need to keep here every day? Not here, this building, but, I mean, I guess with this building, this is elementary. As principals, do you see areas where, like, you have the lockers in or something that they can? Because I would think they have a fair amount of supplies, you know?
So, what they described to us was like two standing, like, cabinet shelf areas that I know that, obviously, for Penburneville, we would absolutely be able to find space for the towels.
I think it's a great idea, I just, I guess when I start doing that math in my mind, I personally am shell-shocked, but if that's the going rate, and we have a community that wants it, there's this need, I'm all for it. Give us the answers to our questions.
Thank you.
All right, the next presentation is the furniture. So, we are progressing through phase one of the middle school, high school project. This phase is set to be done, well, phase one A is set to be done in the summertime, and then phase one B is set to be done at the end of the summer, into qualifying frame. And so, as we turn the areas over, we take possession of it, and we're able to utilize those as classrooms, and then offset other areas that get closed, that gets closed. Part of that does include furniture, and so Dennis is going to present that. One of the things that we'll talk about is, with the furniture as we go through, is keep in mind that there's very little piecework. One of the philosophies, or one of the approaches we tried to do was go more mobile furniture. That way, when people need to move things out, or switch rooms, or relocate, clean the facilities, it's a much more easier approach than filling the classrooms with cabinets and motion.
All right, now I want to preface two primary things. Number one, this has been a culminating group effort since August. It's been Dr. Nesse, myself, Mr. Hammer, Mr. Lynch, and Dr. Matlack. We've been to three different school locations, and we've been talking to two different vendors to try to, number one, get a lot of ideas as to what's going to provide the best learning experience for our kids in terms of environment, but then two, what's going to be the most physically responsible. So, what I present to you is from, essentially, these, these diagrams and these drawings are from Tanner Furniture. We did work with Corbett as well, as a different company. Unfortunately, as we started going through this, our quotes for Corbett did not include mobile storage, and it was significantly more expensive, in excess of two hundred thousand dollars. So, we got less and paid a lot more. So, what I'm presenting to you is kind of where we've landed in terms of design and thoughts, but not color. So, as you look at these things, don't be like, that's an awful color, like, why would you guys have to remotely paint that? So, this is more function, not form. Now, I also want to preface that construction phasing and the way we're going to kind of discuss furniture phasing are slightly off. So, when we talk about phase one in terms of furniture, we're talking about our tower, and basically, this whole left side of our building. So, that's what's supposed to be online come August for the start of the school year. When we talk about phase two, phase two are our science, ag, and engineering classrooms that are supposed to come on board in December. Our goal here, so what I'm going to share with you tonight, is phase one and phase two. So, to get both pricing, ultimately, we would kind of lock in those agreements, but the shipment would come in two phases and be installed and set up the way we would want it. So, I want to walk you through a couple of different ideas. Really, when we looked at furniture, there's three primary categories that we were exploring. So, obviously, there's furniture for teaching and learning, but as Dr. Nesse said, some of you were with us when we went to Middletown years ago, and Craft Tree Roarbaugh did that as well. And there's no casing on exteriors of classroom walls anymore. Again, most of the time, that just collects stuff, and it's clutter, and it takes away from the physical space for learning. So, one of the challenges that we had is we all... So one of the challenges that we had is we also had to look at how can we build in some mobile classroom storage that would allow us to kind of create different learning areas, but also store classroom materials, classroom libraries, and other items. And the other piece that I just didn't want to lose sight of is building storage. We have a lot of storage closets throughout the building. Those need to have racks and storage systems, so that, this is all included when we started looking at them. I have these thumbprints just to give you kind of a small sampling. So what I want to walk you through is some different learning environments and show you what this would look like essentially in real life. So our general classrooms, we wanted to keep things pretty simple and we wanted to keep them flexible so that if we had to ebb and flow furniture into a math classroom versus an ELA classroom, we didn't have proprietary furniture so that every classroom was different. So everyone is essentially getting kind of a stock set of classroom furniture. The desks that we went with kind of have this hourglass shape and there's a couple of reasons behind that. One, service area for learning is significantly bigger than the desks that we here currently used to. Not that we're promoting like the hundred percent, all day we're using computers, but it is nice when you're working with a laptop, it give a little bit of extra space that you could put kind of off into a corner and then ultimately still have your books and your papers and your pens. The other benefit to this type of shape is it fits nicely into collaborative groupings and different configurations. So we can pull them apart for individualized learning, but we can also group them to do some neat collaborative work. Right now, we do have these chairs in one of our middle school classrooms that we got as a free classroom set, incredibly comfortable and durable. We decided to go with these bold yellow legs and we actually kind of like the look of it, well, some of us do. So again, colors are yet to be decided, but ultimately, that's the, that's the traditional student setup. Each classroom would also be outfitted with a set of four to five desks that can be raised to standing height with a standing height chair, so that chair comes in a slightly different height so that we can have a whole group of, or a pot of four that would be standing height versus seated height. We are finding that, especially at the high school level, kids like to be up. They like to be moving, they like to be standing while working. It's not for everybody, but ultimately, as we kind of build that into every classroom, there might be some classrooms that might end up getting more of the standing height desks than others, but it gives us some flexibility and learning space. From a teacher perspective, every teacher desk is on casters and wheels so that as we are working through different classroom configurations, we don't have to have the teacher keep packing up a box and moving it. We literally just wheel that desk right out, move it to the next classroom, and the mobile storage essentially is the same concept. And one thing that we felt that we really wanted to incorporate also in these classrooms was a kidney shaped table for teachers to be able to pull small groups and work with individual groups of students. So you have kind of different stations set up in the classroom. You could have kids working independently with desks by themselves, working in collaborative groups, and teachers could be pulling small groups to intervene and work with kids on an individual level. So this furniture, although basic, allows for different configurations and different styles of teaching and learning, and it gives us the greatest flexibility. So these are just two ways that this furniture can be organized. Same exact furniture, different variations. I've seen a lot of this in some of our ELA classrooms when they're, they're having some discourse, a little bit more of a traditional setup with rows and columns. But again, you see that the same desk can kind of provide different orientations and create different learning experiences that would fit the teacher and their style as well as the student's learning abilities. In addition to this, if you're ever at the buildings, you'll see that our administrators often are rolling around on their mobile carts and their mobile desks. Getting teachers up and moving and interacting with the kids is a critical piece. So the podiums that are static aren't really beneficial to the movement. So with that teacher desk, we're also proposing to get one of those mobile podiums so that they can be presented, moving around, again, pulling kids up, and it just keeps everything flexible and moving. You will see in these drawings, pretty much every classroom does have a stock wardrobe closet, lockable wardrobe closet that is built in, that is part of the bed, but outside of that, there's not fully stored. So when you see these called out, these are all just mobile book shelves and bookcases that one has doors on it to kind of store things away that are a little more cluttered, the other two are open for other materials. I also wanted to share with you kind of our vision for learning support and emotional support at this point in time. Our learning support and emotional support classrooms have the same furniture, it's just pared down because oftentimes it's a caseload. But we also, for regulation purposes, like self-regulation purposes and having kind of a safe space and a collaborative space to work with that teacher, we were also proposing to put some soft seating in there as well. Now, when I say soft seating, it's not the softest. It is, one of the more couch style is very durable. The material is similar to what we have at Bethel and PB in the libraries. But we thought having those, this kind of community corners and spaces in that classroom would be beneficial, especially if the student had to go back to that room, kind of self-regulate, get themselves back in, you know, a good mental state to go back to class. Or if they're real pulling school groups and working, it's just a nicer area for them to be able to learn together. So our learning support and emotional support classrooms will be equipped like this, that would be standard. We also have small group instruction rooms throughout the building. Initially, we were thinking about putting some soft seating in our small group instruction rooms, but after talking, we're going to take those out of the small group instruction rooms and just keep that as a flexible classroom where people can go in and pull small groups and work on interventions outside of the classroom. So the small group instruction rooms are actually going to be pared down to desks, the kidney table, and mobile storage with a podium. We, after a couple of different iterations of this, we decided we're going to take the teacher desk out because it's not a teacher's classroom, we're going to reduce that soft seating. So we've already looked for ways that we could start to cut things and make it more physically responsible, but also practical and useful. There's no point hanging a teacher desk that no one's going to ever sit at. When it comes to the business classroom on the left-hand side, so this is Mr. Mallhoops' classroom. He has, you know, external monitors, so we have a table that has, you know, some different troughs and trays to manage all the wires and the cables. So this keeps things nice and clean for him in instruction. Then our engineering lab, although the CAD drawing does not show it, there are large collaborative, like, industrial tech tables that will fill this space. Our vision for the engineering lab is, you have the classroom space in the front where it's a little bit more traditional instructions, and then you have a CAD lab in the back with giant work tables. You'll see the work tables in the drawing itself in the middle. So it just gives you three different spaces and different opportunities, ultimate leaps of work. For our science classrooms, they're a little bit unique. We have a number of science classrooms that in the drawing, if you remember back in traditional science classrooms, you had these peninsulas that were fixed and built into the perimeter. Our middle school, science classrooms, and our physics classrooms, they're not built in as peninsulas. They're actually movable tables. They're these normal epoxy resin science tables that are on heavy-duty casters that can slide up against the peninsula and create that. Or you can pull those aside and you can line them up and it essentially becomes student desks. So we did not see a point in these classrooms getting student desks when we had mobile tables. We figured we should take advantage of the furniture we have. But in talking with the science teachers as well, especially physics, if they wanted to do a lab where they were racing cars or doing things on the floor, the less furniture they had in there, the better, because the more space they have to move around. So what you're seeing up here is a science classroom where kids might be pushed against the perimeter to work on a lap that require to sit. And what you see here is the same furniture, it's just aligned in rows because the teacher might be doing some direct instruction. So these tables were essentially heavy-duty casters, they're taller, they're counterheight, so we would need a taller chair, but we're looking to use science rooms a little bit differently. Our chemistry and biology room, I do not have drawings of those. They have fixed peninsulas, so they're going to be a little bit more traditional. Their tables don't move, so we are putting desks kind of in that middle so that we have a dedicated instructional space versus perimeter lap space. For chemistry, that makes sense, it's going to be gas jets and, you know, water jets and air jets. So obviously, those tables are going to be able to move, but I wanted to try to articulate at least our vision for these science classrooms. When we look at total budget, on the left-hand side, I tried to get an idea of what phase one, well, phase one and phase two are essentially including. So if we're looking at fifty-four learning classrooms, five small group instruction rooms, ten storage areas for our building and custodial teams. The media center is in this, the nurses' suite. The D.O.A. soccer office is in there. That's Trevor abbreviated, I just figured it'd look better than Mr. Brown. And then our athletic training office is also included in that. So when you look at total FFNE for this building project, we're just over $2 million. Looking at purchase technology, in terms of the interactive whiteboard switches and cameras, we are at $380. Phase one right now is coming in right at $780, but that's with finishes and will likely be a little bit less. But we need to make final decisions on that. So it's not going to go above $780, that's the quote we have now, that's pared down. But we do have to determine finishes and levels of finishes. So again, that may be less, but it's not going to be any more. Phase two incorporates the cafeterias, the music area, art, and a lot of offices. We're estimating based on conversation, that's going to come in around $600. So when all that totals up, we're looking to be around $300, $5,000 under budget in our FFNE that will be allotted for furniture and technology and equipment. Timeline is the tough part. So we've been working at this since August and lead times get tricky with furniture. So if August is when we're going to have install, furniture's going to be in these new classrooms for day one of students, order has to be placed at the end of February. Now, our goal is to bring this to you December, then January, but based on the vendors, we couldn't make these numbers up, so we were at the mercy of getting this information from them.
Yes, I got a whole shitload of questions. Is it plastic or hard composite?
So student desks are a laminate-covered wood top with a steel frame. And then the student seat is a poly, like a polymer-based plastic that has flexibility, or it's a lot sturdier than what the current ones are that we have.
Do they have a lifetime expectancy on this?
I could look. I mean, I know warranty-wise, they were saying a hundred percent warranty for...
I'll swerve my next question.
Right, for ten years and then, but they've been very good. We went to Penn Manor. Penn Manor, new building, is the same exact company, same furniture, different shapes, but it's been holding up extraordinarily well and they've had zero issues. Anything that may have been some form of defect, they've called Tanner and they fixed it immediately. And I can say with the Bethel library, one of the pieces of furniture that we got, there's like a little puller and one of the soft seatings, we called them. They came out, no questions asked, fixed it right away. So they've been standing by, by their products.
Should I have you bring in an example of this move we have?
Yeah, so if you're ever at the high school, the quality is, is what's in Ashley's counselor. Now, that laminate top, there's two different levels of that laminate. There's like a thermal pressed, like a little bit heavier duty laminate that goes over the top of it, but either way, it's wrapped in either PVC or an ABS band just to kind of make sure that it's held sturdier.
Which one are we quoted?
We're quoted at just the base laminate top with the PVC.
And that's what's in the classroom?
And that's just in the classroom now.
Alright, we, you want us to go with the higher next meeting, because I'll stop hoping to look at it?
Yeah, if you stop, if you stop up, that'd be great. Ultimately, the challenge is, we kind of need blessing because we have to pick colors, we still have to finalize quantity, and then, then it has to be, order has to be placed. And like I said, we've been pushing for two months now to get finalized numbers and unfortunately, I couldn't get the numbers from, before today.
Who puts this stuff together, they do?
Combination of like, they take our vision boards and what we create, they kind of mock things up. We go back to them and say, this, we don't like this, we like this.
No, no, I meant when it shows up.
Oh, they do, it's all they do.
Oh, they do, okay.
So what you see in these drawings, they set it up exactly as these drawings do.
Okay.
So when they walk out of that classroom, the classroom's ready to be...
Basically, yeah.
If it's cleaned, it's you, you go.
Gotcha. Where are they from?
Tanner's in Carla, like the dance room.
I know they made it there.
No, so the, most of the furniture is Han, like the brand Han or Archovell. I'm not a hundred percent sure where they're manufactured out of. I can tell you, before coming to Tulpe, when I was at Conestoga Valley, we opened up a brand new middle school. I worked with Tanner. Different, we picked different stuff based on what kind of worked for us. We had no issues with install and delivery. They give you a week window, they hold your stuff in their warehouse until that week and they come in and it's all hands on deck and then it's, it's set up, it's done. We had zero issues. And if there was a minor defect or something as they were doing it, they took it right back out and gave you a new one. So I can speak from experience working with them. They do a nice job when it comes to handling things.
Yeah, relatively. Furniture, that's awful to me.
Absolutely. Now, Corbett was like lower merit, so also like, I mean, relatively close. But again, there, without all of the excess perimeter storage, they were at $980,000. And we didn't like the teacher desks as much. We got samples, we got teacher feedback, and we didn't even want to show them the teacher desks. We knew they, we knew they were lying. So the, the big trick is, again, seeking kind of approval to move forward with this. We're going to finalize, you know, final touches, colors, that's $780, again. I'm a hundred percent confident we're going to be under that, we're not going to be over it because most of our finishes, we've got quoted at like mid-grade finishes, we don't need those things. The challenge is, there's a couple of areas that we're still playing around with. So our collapse spaces, we have two collapse spaces left, the one outside the library and the one outside the tower. We're still finalizing what those are going to look like. So ultimately, that's why this price could vary, more down than up. But we did not include the old cafeteria in this design because when phase two comes through, we buy brand new furniture, it's going to get banged up. So we're going to include, even though this cafeteria is going to be finished in phase one, we're going to include that cafeteria when we start looking at the rest of the building because we want to make sure when it's in, there's no construction and we're not eating it up. We want it to last.
Who takes the furniture that we existingly have, we are replacing?
So it, it basically is on us, so we could do a couple of different things. We did talk to Lowbar. They are, they are going to look at seeing if we don't want it and we want to dispose of it, you know, in, in, with them disposing it, they're going to look and say, okay, then we'll scrap it and maybe it's worth us taking, them taking and scrapping it. But at the end of the day, it's, it's basically ours. So districts have done it differently. Some have done like public auctions, some have decommissioned that and just put it out there and available to residents. We really, we, we can control what we want to do with that existing furniture.
We had trouble selling desks and stuff like that on GoDeals, right?
Yeah, yes. We, I wouldn't say lost money, we pretty much lost money on that.
Well, there's still a big hole up that dip we just throw in.
The unfortunate part is they don't stack them like I said, you know?
As a side note, too, Mrs. Count's classroom at the middle school, like, we have gotten student feedback and teacher feedback, so it's all been very positive in terms of what's in there. It's just a different shape. We like the shape that we're going with now versus the one that we got before, what we weren't going with.
Some of the furniture that we've done in the past as we've approached some of our local private schools to see if they're interested in it. That's something that we can do. I think we have had furniture shipped, you know, local missions that are in our area have then paid to have it shipped to other areas, so we can certainly, you know, pursue that. But it kind of is in our discretion as teachers.
It looks like it could be a big burden on us. When was the last time our furniture was upgraded in a junior high or a high school?
That's a great question. What I do know is the backs of the seats are breaking all the time. They lean back, they snap, I mean, it's, they're not in great shape at all.
You don't think we could reuse some of it?
I'm a hundred percent certain, I have to, I have, there has to be one board member that's... I'm surprised Bill didn't say it seriously.
No, it's, it's, it's in rough shape.
He's always questioning.
It's in rough shape. But I do believe, you know, kind of as a collaborative group, this will create furniture that is physically responsible compared to what we see, but it provides like ample opportunity to rearrange classrooms with these and do different things.
I'm fine with, if you need our blessing on this, I think I'm fine with, you know, giving that blessing, we are under budget. It's, in my opinion, we're, I mean, we're five percent, or not, more than five percent under budget. Fifteen percent, yeah. So far, yeah, so far. Are you pretty confident you have, or you have identified what you need for phase two and have a good handle on what that costs? And is there any risk of inflationary pressure?
And is there any risk of inflationary pressure driving anything up till we're ready for phase two that we want to?
Yeah, so it's a great question. With the current manufacturers, if we lock in in February, they're going to honor that for phase three. So that, that furniture, basically, we're locking in, phase one and two are going to be this price.
This price.
But then when we go to the, like, the 200 hallway classrooms, we're going to be getting the same setup, we get to keep that price.
Right, so that's okay.
So that's not part of that budget, no?
So that would be in that, that rough, that's in the $600,000 for everything in blue. So these classrooms here-
So are two and three over in this 75? Phase two and three, $700,000?
Purple and green are in the $780,000, and blue is the $600,000. And why we threw the $600,000 over is, it really is the cafeteria.
Cafeteria.
Those can be locked in. So in their initial build, their, their initial build, like, kind of when we said, hey, I would like this, different types of seedings, it was about $250 per cafeteria, and we're like, no. You know, there were, there were seedings for, you know, $8,000, $9,000 per table. That's not, we, we went back and said, that's not, you know, that's not appropriate.
And we have, we have time for phase three, which is nice, because we're going to go break to the drawing board with them and start to work on those trickier spaces. Classes were a little bit easier like that thought.
But phase three, two and three are in that $700,000?
One and two are in the $780,000. Just three.
One and two are in, oh, okay. I misunderstood what you said.
Yeah. The one and two are in the $780,000, and the $600 is during the year.
I mean, I don't care, I, I would like to admit they're expected by, I would work for 10 years.
At one point, they told me, when we went to Tanner and had a talk.
I would hope that if the warranty covers 10 years, they're expecting to last a lot longer than 10 years. That's pro-rated warranty, yeah.
Well, that's just, that's a manufacturer, the Tanner themselves-
No, no, but I meant, so, let's say on year nine and a half, it breaks, are you only getting five cents on the dollar or it's 100 cents straight up?
Straight, you're like.
Okay.
Well, even after that, Tanner has said they stand by this stuff and you call and then that was what's it.
How long has Tanner been in business?
Over, I think that guy's tagged. I mean, it's at least, it's 25 to 55 years, I don't remember where it falls.
Oh, okay, so long.
It's been around. And most of, most of the schools in our area, they have them.
It was supposed to be way more on the current side.
So our goal, we'll get ahead of, of phase three and start sharing ideas with that, but our trickery spaces there, like Dr. Ness et cetera, are cafeterias. It's not a lot of classrooms in phase three, cafeterias and offices, offices aren't as bad as classrooms price-wise, so I'm confident that we come in under that $600, too, we just want to give you an idea of-
Well, if they're saying, if they're not, they're guaranteed, they're not going out.
Yeah, okay. And you get that price.
Tom, once, were you involved in any furniture upgrades in your tenure?
I was involved in Bethel.
But nothing at the Junior Senior High School?
No.
There's a few flexible seedings. There's a few flexible seating things for no desks.
Because when we were in, we had that desk that you put your books on the end, it slammed to the ground and you got up.
Yes.
Those aren't there anymore. At some point-
You mean the ones that flip?
Yes. They're not there. So we upgraded since.
The desks that are there from when I was in school, yeah, I know that.
Oh, so did.
There was some desks purchased when we renovated in '08.
And book rack underneath the chair. Those still there?
Yeah.
And the middle school, there was some, probably in that.
Yeah, and the middle school was built in '97, those were all new. So that's from '97, at least that Sutton High School, I believe, is older. Just don't go to Mrs. Councilor first. That's about two months old. So if you guys are on board, we'll-
Are you looking for a vote for that tonight, or just the blessing to move forward?
I don't know that we need a vote, but definitely just your blessing to get this finalized price and all connected.
As long as the majority's in the same year.
It was part of the budget and the people that helped, right?
Yeah, so our thought was, as long as, as long as you're okay with us moving forward and giving, to kind of lock in, we, we could then ratify it on the 20th and officially vote.
Fine, I'd like to, like. Mr. Hammer's coming around. Art teacher doesn't like color.
Okay, the-
Keeps away. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
The last portion is, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Hammer, and he's going to kind of go through a proposal for Keystone exams.
So I know there's been a lot of presenting to you tonight, so I'm going to do my absolute very best to be direct and to the point. The building project has been an absolute blessing for this community, for our students, for our staff, for our teachers. But with every lesson, there are obviously obstacles and challenges, and I don't want to steal anyone's quote, but with every obstacle and challenge comes opportunities. Some of the obstacles and challenges we are facing is obviously construction and doing standardized state assessment during construction. The 100 hallway will have to be basically shut down when we are doing our Keystone data sets, so it's, the 100 hallway is touching what's going to be the new middle school. We can't have kids in there testing if people are outside the exterior walls doing what they need to do, which would force us to reflect back into the building and isolate within the modular units and potentially the 200 hallway, which would leave us very little space for regular construction throughout the day. So what I'm asking and proposing for is, we have two modules for each Keystone assessment. All those modulars, just the high school, would run a three-hour A scale. This would not modify any of our transportation, our busing. This would only apply to those students who are testing, who are either failing grades or who have exceptional grades and would be currently allowed to stay home and given their own transportation from their home in three hours. So the rigoring, we would have a three-hour A schedule, the kids who are testing for Keystone will come in in the morning, report, do their testing, and then do a three-hour A schedule in the afternoon. Students who have failing grades would need to report, have a regular report time, work with their teachers to get all their failing grades up. Students with parental permission could stay home during that time, would have online assignments from their teachers that'll correspond with the work that they get in the afternoon, so they can stay home, do some work, bring it in, and they can get that lesson in the afternoon with their regular teachers. Again, no adjustments to our transportation. All of our staff, all of our faculty would be utilized in this. All teachers would either be monitoring testing, would be doing hall doing for testing, or be working with students who have failing grades. If you look at the bottom, what this does, it does help our BCTC students. In the past, we've had to run flip schedules, we've had to run the morning, in the afternoon, in the afternoon and the morning, they're all able to get to as many classes as they can. With this three-hour A schedule, students will get the majority of classes, BCTC will get the majority of classes, but they do miss a couple periods, but all students can get all classes each day on a Keystone module. What we would also be able to do is, one, the opportunity is to bring those students that are failing. So we can start to promote this, advertise this, and say, look, you could potentially have six days where you could stay home, do some work independently, and then, but put the feet on the fire of the students to make sure they get all their grades turned in before those days proposed at the bottom. So I'm going to run that very quick, I'd like to open up the floor just for conversation, questions.
What? I'm a little lost. So what does this help?
What does this help?
Yeah.
So normally, we run regular instruction during Keystone. So we had to isolate rooms that we could do Keystone. We're not able to do that because we're not able to test in the 100 hallway.
So they don't have room, they don't have enough space to do both?
So you don't have enough space for all the students?
We don't. Not during testing and running a normal schedule.
And during a normal schedule. So what happens if there isn't enough parents able to bring their kids in for a three-hour A?
Well, we have our drivers, that's a big chunk of students, and have a deep parental permission to drive, but there will also be siblings of those drivers with parental permission, and there would be parents that would be able to drive their students in. But even that decrease of, if you would just take how many drivers are up or how many students are testing, that swap alone would be able to test students.
You might not have that whole classroom that can drive, so what do you do with the kids that couldn't drive in that classroom? We would offer, like, a study offer them to work on their-
Yeah, yeah, so if they want to come in, anyone's allowed to come in if they want to, to work with them. But it would basically be the teachers be able to pull in kids and work on their grades during that time. We would never sell to them, they can't finish at regular time. Parents could send their kids at regular time if they liked to. We're saying kids that have Fs were required to come in.
So what about doing virtual days instead of making anybody come to school that's not supposed to? Why not let them all stay home and do virtual, that way you don't have to worry about people that don't have transportation not getting to school?
That was a thought that was kind of thrown out there, but I would prefer have students in school with our teachers, was my proposal to do.
Because this is just a three-hour time slot, it's not the entire school.
Yes, it is. Yeah, so the mornings are late, we do our testing, we work with our kids who are failing, and then in the afternoon, we have our classes at abbreviated time.
So to kind of just recap, because I know there's some questions. So typically, we would, Keystone exams come out on May 13th, 14th, we would shut down the 100 hallway, part of the 500 hallway, or we've done modulars based on the, based on, you know, the number of kids that were testing. And so typically, we would shut sections of the building down and then shift classes that were taking those rooms all over the building. Sometimes there's like four classrooms in the cafeteria, sometimes four classrooms in the auditorium dispersed. The problem is with part of the renovation, we've lost classrooms that we would rely on, one of them being the library. We pull a lot of like small group, special education instruction that needs to be, have accommodations in the library, we pull them in. We just don't have those areas to be able to pull the kids in testing. Plus, with construction running right up against that three, that 100 hallway, we're not sure what that noise will be like during the whole testing window, so the thought was, and we run this two-hour delay, or three-hour delay, and say to kids, okay, we're only going, we're going to run a three-hour delay at 7:30, those that are testing algebra Keystone, you come in, we're going to put you into 200 hallway and the 600 hallway rooms, and you're going to be testing, and then the rest of the, after that testing, the rest of the building would, would then join for academics to begin.
Tom, does that make sense? Tom, thought, what if you have all the seniors virtual, does that give you enough space? Because just looking at your dates, the seniors are checked out. They only have one more week after that.
Those are academically more than anything. There's still a lot of good, not brutal, but there are still some seniors that are getting grades in past classes, yes.
So this would be a motivation, if you started advertising soon, that, hey, I'd like to do the three-hour, I'm going to try to catch up my grades so I can read them.
Yes, ma'am, it would be.
I'll take your recommendation, I'm not following, honestly, I'm seriously, I can't wrap my head around this.
So the last sentence, then, the multiple teachers would need to share instructional space, are those teachers, the question, who are actually instructing, are those the teachers who are helping the failing students?
At the bottom where it says alternate, that's if we don't run a three-hour A.
Oh, if we don't.
Yeah. So for example, I'm going to clear all the ladies, all the ladies in the modular units, the core classrooms, the modular units, we need to use those units because it's away from construction, isolated. I have to take all those ladies and say, okay, all four of you, teach class in the backside of the cafeteria, periods one through four.
Yeah, which is ridiculous, yeah.
I think it's, one of the things we realized we might have to change when we start construction, I mean, there's, there's going to be gives, gives throughout the whole process till it's completed, so sometimes we've got to make some adjustments, I'm, I'm fine with it.
And your teachers are good, willing to flex this day?
I, I really do think so, because that burden has kind of been put on, Natalie, are you a Keystone teacher, you're teaching us, but because your kids are taking a test, we're going to ask you to administer a test. So, but actually, we'll, we'll actually have a pivot a little bit, with teachers that are normally not doing those responsibilities, we can switch those responsibilities on.
And I noticed in the morning, I guess they will post, the kids who can stay home, what their work is.
Yep, and then when they come in for instruction in the afternoon, hey, you guys did this home, this is what we talked about, just pepper it, maybe start that and get back in class. So any other questions, concerns I could possibly address and answer? Thank you very much.
Thank you. That ends my report. Are there any citizens or students wishing to address the board pertaining to agenda items only? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Where? Oh, jeez, I'm sorry.
I just have a question going back to that three-hour A. My daughter is here and she's in her study program, she took like the leave at 1:50 every day, what would that look like to her if all the classes were going to be in the afternoon? Because she typically was going to work in the afternoon.
So we do have a couple students that we'll apply to, but we'll have to do those on an individual basis. I'm sure she'd be able to check in with the teacher ahead of them, and just be able to go right to her assignment.
Anyone else? All right, moving on to buildings and grounds and technology, Mr. Hammer.
Another question. Go to that, do his proposal.
Hey, everybody, thank you. This is that typical once a year thing for E-rate. This year, we're looking to get switches for our high school. We originally had slated on five-year plan to do switches last year, building differently. We could wait here, see what we would need in the build. Going through the high school with the last transition and everything, we're going to need roughly 22 switches around the building. So the quote, I believe, everyone has a quote. The quote is for 22 switches to power all our new speakers, clocks, TVs, access points and phones, just everything that'll get plugged in now. The quote is for $162,211. This is E-rate money, so we are able to get discount on it, we pay 30% of that, so our bill will roughly be $48,663 dollars for that.
Who pays the rest?
What's that?
Who pays the rest?
So the, the E-rate program, when you buy internet at home or your business, all them fees that you pay, it goes towards the federal E-rate program, so that's to help schools fund networking and internet and libraries, it also helps the public libraries.
You pay for it?
Yes.
I want to pay for it.
Correct. Everyone that has internet pays for it. That's, that's one of the federal governments, everyone in the United States, that school listens to public libraries and use that program. We get a set amount of money, and it's also based on our, our free introduced lunch accounts and other things, depending on how much money you get back. So if we're one of the higher ones, we get 70% off on network based on our population. Any questions? Thank you.
All right, and the next one, we're going to load on, approve the, approve the proposal with Pro My Corp for air quality testing in accordance to first start pricing.
So the proposal before you is, you, you have three quotes for air quality testing. We're now four months into it, and there was some misinterpretation as to whether air quality testing was included in the base bid or in the contract, or some minimal stuff that the contractors will check for, but not ongoing air quality checks. So, you know, there have been some concerns about allergies and- So, you know, there have been some concerns about allergies and just, you know, general dust, and we just wanna add a layer of precaution as to, to make sure everything is fine. So we did solicit quotes out there. When we did the Bethel project, we did weekly testing. In talking with each of the vendors, that seemed to be maybe a little overkill to do weekly. But bi-weekly is a good balance, is kind of a happy medium to be testing and making sure air quality. So the proposal that you have is for about $48,000. What that would include is bimonthly testing. There's baseline testing that's done upfront, then bimonthly testing for air quality, and then end of the project. It does include 26 months of testing within that. And that, the quote for Pro Act came in significantly cheaper than the other two federated. So we're recommending that Pro Act local company for this project.
Now, this wasn't voted, so where would the money be coming from?
This would come from our contingency. It could come out of F and E, or it could come out of contingency.
Contingency for the project?
Yeah.
You're recommending bi-monthly?
We're recommending bi-monthly. So contingency was our contingency is at 3% of the project. We're $2 million. Uh, sorry, $1.7 million of contingency, or like you said, we would still have money in the F and E.
Contingency, are we using any other, any other?
We don't have.
We've got a change, but change negative change. Credit change.
Yeah, we've, there are some pending change orders that are minimal. There's also some pending positive change orders. So at this point, we're probably awash, I would say, based on.
But you guys should see all of that.
Yeah.
Pro all those changes. So you wanna.
One, 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 ready.
This would have to be.
All right, I guess.
Oh, you're ready? Oh, okay, I get you. I, okay. So I'll make a motion that we that we make a motion that we'll vote on the Pro Act quote here as listed.
Hold on a second. Any comments? And that would be, just for the record, then, Chris, that is the bi,
Yeah.
Bi-weekly.
Yeah.
For a 26-month period. $38,992. That is, that's for the testing, and you'll see there's some others.
There's more.
Oh.
So you'll see, task one is at 4,600, and task two is the site evaluation of the bi-monthly at $30,992. And then you have task three at 5,800, and task four at 4,900.
Oh, I see the plan.
Quality is.
Yes. And then at the third page, you'll see, total project recommended is $48,368. And that's for bi-monthly routines.
You good?
Do we have a second?
Yeah.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
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 Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
No.
Great, moving on to finance. Mr. Heck.
All right. So, finance, we have A. Through the transfer of $3 million from the general fund to the capital reserve fund effective June 30th, 2023.
Looking for a second? Heck, second. Any comments?
The only thing I would, I would mention is that the $3 million being transferred to capital reserves is something that we anticipated for use at the high school project. So it's not that we just magically found $3 million that we're transferring. It is something that we've accounted for and built into the overall high school project, middle school project.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Kester? Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Great, moving on personnel, Mr. Palmer.
Yes. Okay, 7A.1, or 7A. I move to approve the bond professional staff salary adjustments based on credit attainment according to the collective bargaining agreement as listed there.
Heck, second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Bass?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
7B, I move that we accept the following resignations as listed there.
Heck, second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Coffin?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
7C, I move that we rescind the motion from January 2nd, 2024, employed Derek Stur as a K3 learning support teacher at Penn Virgo Elementary.
Heck, second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
7D, I move that we approve the following employments as listed there.
Heck, second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
So I see that we found a speech, and I'm like, oh, that's hard.
Yeah, yes.
So that's great.
So outside of the K3 learning support teacher, we were fully staffed for a period of time.
Right, right.
But yes, that, that has been a loss.
K3 learning support teacher, that one. Stinks.
That one surprised us.
7E, I move that we approve Wesley Polyak as a mentor for Megan Buck's middle school art teacher at a stipend of $250.
Heck, second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
No.
Chris, Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass?
No.
Coffin?
No.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
You guys are killing me.
Nine, or seven F, I move that we approve the following childbearing, childgroom leave of absence as listed there.
Heck, second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
7G, I move that we rescind the following supplemental contract for the following coach position for the 23-24 sports season as listed.
Heck, second.
As listed.
Heck, second.
Wait, were we rescinding or approving?
We rescinding.
So now we have a, any need to fill out?
Assistant coach, at least.
Assistant, yeah.
That is one of the next items.
Okay.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass? Bass, Bass?
Yeah, yeah.
Coffin?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
7H, I move that we approve supplemental contract for the following coach position for the 24-25 sports season as listed.
Heck, second.
Any comments?
Uh, I'm sorry.
Just that she's a graduate.
Yeah, that's cool.
Don't attract it all.
Are you taking H and I together?
We can, I, I'll make the motion that we approve I also supplemental contract for the following coaching position for the 23-24 sports season as listed.
Heck, second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Kester? Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick? Feiler?
Yes.
7J, I move that we approve the following substitute classified staff, events staff for the remainder of the 23-24 school year as listed. And also, I'll take K along with that, I move that we approve the following volunteers for the remainder of the 23-24 school year as listed there.
Heck, second, it took both pages together, dude. See, you took a book, both pages together.
Any comments?
Okay.
Roll call.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Coffin?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Heck, number nine, policy clues?
Well, I still have this, okay. So policy A, we're gonna give, first reading with the intent to give second reading and final approval on February 21st, 2024, the following policies, I'm gonna say, as listed from 901 to 98.
We're approving this? Looking for a second?
Second.
Any comments? Roll call.
Coffin?
Yes.
Kester?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Feiler?
Yes.
Chris Miller?
Yes.
Heck?
Yes.
Bass?
Yes.
Moving on to curriculum, and this is Chris Miller.
Yeah, yeah, you used too much of that earlier.
This furniture, this is, this is even more slant. It's over the next hour or so.
There you go, just push A and B till next week. Yeah, next week.
All right, so I brought, um, brought some moral support quickly to back this up, but again, just to set the table, over the course of the last year and a half, there's been a K-12 collaborative effort to really analyze both math and literacy instruction. And Dr. Matt Lacks has been doing a wonderful job leading a math comprehensive team. But when Dr. Matt Lacks and I came on board last year, we knew that we've been using our Envisions program for the last eight years. We were due for a renewal of a math resource to supplement and drive math instruction in our district. But instead of jumping right into identifying a program to replace it, we decided to, again, people can make fun of me, that's okay, we decided to go slow or go fast. Yeah, it's okay. But we wanted to make sure that we identified what should math instruction look like in Polka Hocken, create a vision, and then go out and see what resources are out there that can support our vision. So that we're not just picking the next shiny object that looks good, we're picking something that's rooted in what we believe instruction should be. And as an added caveat to that, Mr. Gears has been doing a wonderful job leading a book study on building thinking classrooms in the, in a math classroom. And it's interesting, because a lot of the topics of discussion that have come from his book study with professionals, with our teachers, that shows that the resource we have right now actually is completely against what our vision is and what building thinking classrooms is teaching, what our teachers, in terms of what best practice would be. So what I want to bring to your attention is our proposal for the adoption of a new math resource. It's known as Elektra Mathematics. But ultimately, I want to kind of walk you through the why behind, you know, our investigation into this program, share with you what's under the hood with respect to like the theoretical framework that makes up this program, share a super quick, kind of high-level overview of a lesson, 40 for grade three, and then ultimately, last year, we had the blessing of adding our two math coaches, one at each building, and they've been doing a phenomenal job. They've come with us to see this in action at two different schools. So they're gonna speak on behalf of what they're seeing in the classrooms, what they're working with students, especially with respect to intervention and math needs, and kind of give you their perspective before I bring it back and give you a timeline of how we envision implementation going. So really, the need for change, I wanted to kind of share the evidence and impact. It's been eight years since we've been using Envisions, and not that I hang everything on, you know, state achievement data, but again, we're measured against it, and our goal is that every single year, try to get more and more kids to reach, you know, an achievement level that we're proud of. When you look at the last eight years, just kind of general trend line, we've kind of been flat, right? There's a little dip in COVID, but generally speaking, pre-COVID to post-COVID, we've been a little bit flat. Now, we're generally, right, we're always above that state average, and we do pretty well in the county, but that's not enough, right? We're not okay, just kind of remaining stagnant. We wanted to challenge and really look at our math instruction and say, are we doing everything we can to get more learners to be achieving at high levels? And when we kind of challenged some of the professional development and research we've been looking at, what research says is that, you know, your traditional memorization-based methods of teaching mathematics fall short of both engaging students and allowing them to deeply understand, you know, the why behind mathematics practices. In addition to that, and I've sat in plenty of board meetings here, where whether we're planning a bus parking lot, or, you know, we're, we're trying to factor in different figures, you can do math, mental math fluency really quickly and solve real-world problems. Our current math resource is not setting kids up to be able to do that. So there's a growing need for critical thinking, problem solving, and real-world application. And I believe, um, I believe that ultimately, kind of this, this stagnant line is, kids are growing, kids are learning math, there's, you know, things are still positive, but we're not seeing this uptick because we're not engaging them in deep learning and understanding and application of mathematic practices. Because a lot of it is, I'm gonna show you how to solve a problem, and then I'm gonna have you mimic me for 30 problems, and that's not translating into long-term applications. So that's what brought us to Elektra Math, and I wanted to kind of give you this, um, you know, image of looking under the hood. So Elektra Math is built on three, you know, primary research-based principles that are in the educational world, high-yielding in terms of producing high-level student learning. The first of them is the problem-based learning method. So as I kind of alluded to, traditional learning is kind of this like regurgitation of information, right? Teacher stands in the front, says, you need to know this, memorize it, and then spit it back to me. But I think everyone at this table knows that when you're trying to solve complex world problems, or real-life problems, it takes critical thinking and creativity and application. And if you're not taught units in that style, it's hard to develop those skills. And we also have identified math fluency as a deficit. Fluency in terms of students being able to just kind of do some of that mental math and, and use simple arithmetic and draw from that in their experience. And again, a lot of that is because this traditional style of just repeat, you know, listen and repeat just doesn't work. So instead, imagine, or Elektra Math is kind of based on this problem-based learning. So students grapple with the math, both on an individual level, in groups, in different ways, in order to identify not just how to work numbers and how to work mathematical functions, but they understand why the numbers and mathematical functions function the way that they do. And ultimately, it's always geared toward solving some problem. It's not solving for what is X, it's solving for an actual problem that, that they've kind of tangibly worked through. One of the things I'm most excited about this program is the, that is rooted in the universal design of learning. So the beauty with this is this allows all learners access to being able to deeply understand material. And it does that in three primary different ways. So it prevents, or it presents the information and the material in different ways. It allows students to express what they know and, and talk about what they, what they're learning in different ways. And also, it stimulates interest and motivation in learning because it's all real-world application-based. Within Elektra Math, there's a lot of differentiation that's happening already that allows for English language learners to thrive, gifted learners to thrive, learning support learners to thrive. Everyone has an opportunity to grapple with the math at their level because it's presented in so many different ways and then allowed to express their thoughts in different ways. And the last piece, kind of going with child development and like PHA problems, there's this concept called concrete representational and abstract. Basically, when we're younger, motion is a key prime part of moving. So a lot of our K-one, K-two, K-three math lessons start with concrete examples of mathematics, meaning they're working with hands-on manipulatives. So they're, yeah.
They can actually use concrete as a perfect example.
Absolutely.
You got three yards of concrete.
Absolutely.
Or a wall or anything, they got math.
Real-world problem. And next time they have to build a bus parking lot, our kids will be able to tap into this. After they have that baseline, you know, ability to concretely work with manipulatives and, you know, physical tangible things, then we start to push students to represent their knowledge and work with math from a pictorial representational part. And after they've kind of got that strong base, now we can abstractly solve complex problems without necessarily having to use those concrete manipulatives or that representation. But the beauty is, if I'm a learner in middle school and I'm struggling in math because of the abstract concept, I can always utilize concrete and representational tools to solve complex problems. Because we're teaching them strategies to not just solve a problem the way I taught them to, it's being able to look at a problem and persevere and look for ways to apply and overcome that challenge. What I mentioned at the beginning, we took a lot of time coming up with a math vision for what we think math instruction should look like. I'm not gonna read this to you. But everything that's bolded and underlined, this program aligns to. So when I said that we vetted programs against our vision, every single bullet here, we had a checkmark next to Elektraic Math fits what our vision actually is. And to share, again, kind of a rough idea of what unit design and lesson design looks like and then an example, everything from top to bottom, from a thirty thousand-foot view of an entire grade level to an individual activity is geared in three phases. There's an opportunity, and it's what they call an invitation to mathematics, where they're kind of initially getting acquainted with what the problem is, then they grapple with that problem, again, both individually and as a group. There's an awful lot of discourse and conversation about what they're thinking, why they're thinking, and why the answer would be what they came up with. And every single phase has a, what we call a closed-loop loop moment. An opportunity to come back, bring it to a kind of a conclusion, a consensus, a synthesis, so that we can lock that in before moving on to that next piece. When you look at an individual lesson, grades K to one, same system. There's an introduction and kind of imitation of mathematics. There's a multitude of activities that are happening within that lesson. And one thing we really liked about K-one is they intentionally built in centers. So they build in rotations and hands-on centers that kids can work with that allows the teacher to be able to work with every single kid in a small group through those rotations and help support their individual needs to create ultimately solid foundational math skills that we can build on. In grades two to five, centers are still a part of it, but they're optional. Already, if you go into some of our second and third grade classrooms, we've created centers to incorporate because our current resource doesn't have them. So this would be a great fit because those centers are gonna be intentionally engaged in what they're learning. So we're excited about that overall structure. So to give you a rough idea of what that could look like, looking at area, it's oddly enough that looking at that kind of fits. And this is just a super high-level overview example. Every lesson starts with what I call that invitation to mathematics. Kids have different types of questions that are being asked or instructionally, but the beauty is there's no right answer. So the whole purpose of the intro to a unit is getting kids to think on their own and provide discourse and argue why they believe something to be the way it is. You're getting everyone to the table to be able to learn about that topic, and there's no pressure of being right or wrong. It's not A, B, C, or D, and one of them is right. It's just what it is. So this one, this is an example. Sometimes they have openers where it's which one doesn't belong, and it's a number of different pictures. Doesn't matter what you decide, you just have to be able to argue and articulate why you think it doesn't belong, and you're in good shape. So that opens up class discourse, they listen to different perspectives, see things through different lenses before they jump into an activity. In this case, this activity for grade three is very concrete-based because they're using tiles to be able to fill in shapes and identify, you know, what area actually represents. Our old program oftentimes would just say, areas length times width done deal. But students don't get that ability to understand, well, what does area actually tangibly represent in the real world? If you don't know what it represents in the real world, it's difficult to solve real-world problems. So if students would grapple with, kind of playing around with different tiles and manipulatives to make area, then the teacher will pull them back in a large group and kind of bring it to a kind of a consensus field, and they would learn something about that, they would take that in the activity two and further explore and now apply that to a different scenario that's a little more challenging. And then the teacher, again, would bring it back to a consensus, a synthesis of, here's what we now know that we built on. And every lesson kind of ends with this, you know, application and closure that allows students the opportunity to transfer to a different problem. This is very different than what we're used to, it's not, again, I'm gonna show you how to solve a problem, solve thirty problems. This is less problems, going deeper, a lot more discussion, and a lot more argument as to not just what answer is right, but why do you believe that answer is right? And every single lesson is geared that way, and it's very exciting to see students in action with this. So in that example, again, you can see the problem-based learning concept, the fact that kids are able to grapple with math in different ways, they can express their thoughts in different ways. And again, they were able to use concrete manipulatives or representational in terms of images, depending on where they were at as a learner, in order to solve the problem. So what I'd like to do is bring up our math coach studs, Nikki, Carly, and Tammy Ritter, just giving you their perspective as a classroom teacher and as an instructional coach.
Thank you. So Dr. Park did an excellent job of kind of laying out, you know, the mental goals, the why, why you think we should go this way. We're kind of more here to just talk about what we saw when we went to visit Elektraic Math at different schools. We were super excited to have the possibility to bring that here for our kids. What we saw was, we saw students who were engaged in learning. They weren't just sitting at their desk, you know, paper, pencil, which there are some of that for sure, but they were engaged, they were up, they were moving, they were talking with their peers, they were talking with their teacher, they were using the manipulatives that were in the room. So it was a really, it was more of a hands-on experience than we have generally been seeing in the elementary buildings in the past few years. So that really excited us. It was all purposeful, with the discussion and using the manipulatives, like it was all one task behavior. They were engaged in the actual math task, but they were not just fooling around, they weren't just building towers with manipulatives. They were actually using the things to further their mathematical knowledge and to actually really experience and dive into the math. Which, again, it's just, every kid, every kid we saw was fully engaged for a full amount of time when we walked into the classroom. And I mean, I've never, I've never seen that before. It was very, it was very refreshing. It was, and it was multiple grade levels. We were in, we were in like the younger grades, like we were in kindergarten class, and we're all, we have to like fifth grade class, and it was the same in every grade. It was full engagement by every student, which is just really amazing, yes.
How did you see the mental math part fitting into classroom? Because I, to me, mental math is very important in the latter. You gotta be able to hit on your feet, you can't, you'd always have access to the phone or the computer, you gotta be able to sit there and pick on your feet. I think that's a very important, what aspects of that do you see?
Yes, so I want to say, they actually also built in like a fact practice, like that they had time to implement this. The lessons typically, we would have a time in our schedule if we did go with this resource to actually also focus on like the fact practice, like do the kids actually know how to add subtraction by in their heads and using strategies like that? But I want to say, like, it wasn't, I didn't see a lot of like, I didn't see calculators, is that like they weren't relying on those? Like, the kids actually did know. But I think also part of it is, kids felt like they were well-convicted in the lesson, so they wanted to learn, they're more engaged. So I feel like they're gonna pick up those facts also just better when they're disengaged. And I, so I saw that too, like it wasn't an issue with them. We made comment at this school that we visited, that generally, if you walk into a classroom in one of our schools, you will see number lines on desks, or, you know, students with multiplication charts, which are great tools and great strategies that happen place for sure. At this school we visited, there was no multiplication charts on desks. There were no number lines. Rather, through the discussion and through the hands-on piece, it really led the students to have that deeper thinking, and it made them more able to, okay, well, let me figure this out, not using the tool. Let me use my brain, let me use my friends to figure this out. One of the examples we even did is they were like, they were trying to say like, it was like the true false, like which one, the back one was true or false, and it was like a arithmetic problem. And they were allowed to, like, had some time to think about it themselves first and actually break it down. And it was very interesting to walk around and see how many different strategies the kids were using, but all arriving at just maybe the answer, and then talking with each other, well, I use this strategy, and I use this strategy. And like, it was, we saw that ability, even at a young age, not only able to do it, but then actually also be able to talk about it and explain it and defend why they did it that way, which was really interesting. Dr. Park, say, it does just marry very nicely with the book that we're doing with Mr. Gears about a more thinking classroom, not just a sitting and, you know, copying classroom, but a more thinking classroom. So the resources would go very nicely together with the professional development that we're receiving as well. Which all ties into trying to make our kids better learners, like long learners, and able, actually, I mean, I think we probably agree, most jobs that you go out to now, you are not going to be able to just like spit the hell out, because you've seen it ten times before, like, no, you're actually going to have to grapple with it, you listen to other people's perspectives, try new ways, try new things, apply your knowledge in a different atmosphere, and that's what this program supports.
So going on to that point, what they were just describing, in particular, the second grade classroom that we were visiting, part of their exercises that had two double-digit numbers that we're not easily quickly add it together. And I was waiting, like, how's this gonna go, watching. And they, we're not using calculators, the rapidity in which they were able to deconstruct one of the numbers and then manipulate it to quickly come to solution was awesome.
Which shows like a deeper understanding of even like place value, that I know that something like our kids are really starting them. But instead, like decomposing a number, like realizing that twenty-three is two tens and three ones, like, at that young age, able to do that and manipulate it into something that another, oh, well, if I have three ones here and seven ones here, that makes another ten. Young age able to do that, which is very impressive.
And just so you, for perspective, we went to Big Spring School District, which was very interesting when we engaged in it. Demographically, identical percentage-wise, double our population, but also double our square footage in the district. Same population of high school, they're showing the CTC, it was fury. But it was exciting to get into this classroom because we didn't see calculators, we didn't see number charts. You had to use this.
Your cell.
You had to do this to solve the problem. So it was, it was, we also brought Rob Sethmanasbi, our learning support lead teacher at the elementary level. I will safely say that Rob was hesitant because of the rigor and the style of learning for learning support. But when he went in and saw that, when you look at a classroom, you didn't know who was an English language learner, you didn't know who was a learning support student, you didn't know where kids were at. All you saw were kids doing, kids solving, kids persevering through problems, and engaged. It was, he left there completely different than what you wanted.
How long have they been on the program, and if they've been long enough, has their math scores increased?
So two years, and already they have seen an increase in math. So where we sit like low fifty percent in achievement, they're already up at like sixty-eight, sixty-nine percent in achievement at the elementary level, and they only expect it to go up there. They're benchmarking it as a difference.
And then how do we transition this to follow through through your high and the high school?
Got that, I'm pouring you nuts.
So I do have a question about, I like what I'm hearing about thinking in your head. Is there a time and a place where the kids are learning the mathematical tables? Like, to refer to, oh, I know what eight times seven is because I memorized that. Is that just going completely away, or?
So it's more, it's more how it's being taught. Like, when taught with purpose, like that application just becomes, that becomes their fluency. So, I mean, there's definitely, we could go like the freeze tape and just go through it and memorize it, and there's still an element of that, but it's more towards like solving and applying that to a situation. So there's connection. So I'm not just trying to take that, you know, that multiplication chart, memorizing and seeing where it's going. It's learning those facts, kind of getting that fluency, but all in an effort to apply it to solving problems in class. So it's a different style, but in the end, they.
Yeah, they end up thinking through it, but, I mean, are you gonna think through every single multiplication problem? I mean, not necessarily, because, you know, there's other maths you're learning too.
I think this is also just one resource. This doesn't mean that this is the only thing that's gonna be happening in our classrooms. Like, I know Tammy and I are currently reading a book specifically about how to teach fact practice, like what strategy, and like, there's actually different facts, like the foundational ones, and then ones that are derived from these foundational ones. We would like to lead professional development with our teachers, that they can introduce that into the classroom too. And like we said, that would be a great thing to do then, students are struggling during like your intervention time and things like that. So even though it might not be something that's specifically built into this resource, that doesn't mean that the teacher is going to be doing something to help support kids that are having difficulty with their fact fluency in the classroom.
Right, because not, I mean, not everyone is mathematically built to think that way. You can teach them and guide them, but they may be more a reader, you know, they're all about language and stuff. And so to not have any kind of basis to refer back to would make it harder for that type of student then, so.
How does that look like integrating or bringing it into students who are already like elementary school and have learned what we taught? How do you, how does that look like transitioning them through high school and get them on?
So that's, that's a great question. So there's two ways of looking at transition, and we actually got to sit down with a panel of even students at Big Spring so that they could tell us, you know, what did old math look like versus new math? They used Envisions as well before switching to this. And the teachers claim that, you know, the shift in instruction was very different because instead of the teacher doing the bulk of the work and the student just kind of mimicking, it was a big shift for them to now relinquish that, and now the students were doing more and getting more tired at the end of a lesson as the teacher was facilitating. But the kids, they loved it. They didn't notice the increase in workload, but they said, we love this new math. And it's not new math, it's just we're relinquishing the learning.
They're learning to them, right.
So there's that piece of, we're gonna be completely shifting the focus of who's doing more of the work. So there's that shift, but then as you go to high school, I'll kind of share a plan, like a forward thinking plan, because K to six is what we're looking at adopting next year, but we're already thinking, how could this style of learning apply to the high school level? I'll share that in a slide or two.
Because this is elementary for now.
You guys, if we're high into this, and we switch from that math before visions to visions, there's probably a heck of a bigger curve.
There's certainly always challenges and hurdles when you switch from one resource to the next. What I really like about this resource, and what's really exciting, I think, is, yes, there's going to be a switch, every day, yeah. But yes, there's going to be a switch in how teachers teach and how the students are used to learning. But once you kind of get that under your belt a little bit, I think just the thinking piece of it will help to bridge some of that gap, because they'll, they'll just be able to use their brains to kind of, okay, well, this is what I'm looking at rather than, okay, I'm sitting here and copying out of this book looking at. So I think, yes, there will certainly be a change and initial uncomfortableness.
And there's no similarities between this and that everyday math we were on before?
I'm sure you can find similarities somewhere.
Yeah.
But it's.
That wasn't popular, so I'm just saying, hopefully.
I, I don't, I think it's a completely different style of, of thinking about math.
To give you another example, like kindergarten right now is still using everyday math. They did not jump on board with Envisions. We had kindergarten representation on our math team. They're all on board with kind of streamlining all this. So we had unanimous kind of buy-in for this resource from the entire team, K to twelve. Any other questions or ideas before I kind of paint a picture?
Thank you.
Forward thinking. I will tell you publicly while they're still here too. They have done a phenomenal job. I want to, it's hard to imagine, but tiered math instruction does not exist to the degree that tiered literacy instruction exists. Because there's tons of resources for literacy that are not resources for math. These ladies with kind of a blank slate blueprint have worked, you know, their tails off to create a tiered structure in math. And just at the start of, you know, essentially this calendar year, right? We now have tier three interventions happening at both elementary schools led by them, while tier two interventions are happening in the classroom. And that's because they took that challenge on, put it on their shoulders, and they're doing phenomenal work. So thank you both for what you did, and I'm excited to see where we go then.
Yeah, thank you.
So to answer a couple of your questions, implementation of a new program and new resource can be a very stressful. So now that we kind of spent our time to identify why, we wanted to look at several resources. We found a resource that aligns with what we believe. Now it's about how can we successfully implement this plan after your approval? So here's kind of our vision for how this implementation is gonna work. In March, April, and May of this year, we have half-day PD days where we, if we're smart, are really trying to start bringing professional learning about this style of instruction and the math program so that we can get teachers a head start in kind of thinking and aligning themselves to what this is gonna look like. We then want to kind of combine that with, we have summer flex time. We want to really utilize that time for grade-level teams to, again, look at those resources and continue. look at those resources and continue conversations in professional learning community or community. And then in August, when we get back, we want to reengage with them with another professional learning session, just to kind of revamp and look at how we can leverage the new resource. In a lot of schools, you'll find that implementation happens in August. We send teachers home for the summer. When they come back, we hit them really hard with PD, with the new program. And it's like, try to drink out of a fire hose digest and make it happen. We think that this plan is going to kind of space things out so that our teachers feel as confident and as comfortable as possible in this new strategy and new instructional tech, or new instructional resource, so that we have success when we go full-tilt in August. So that's ultimately the plan. Also, forward thinking, just to give you an idea, because I know this question came up, the Lester Math actually goes up to 10th grade. So incorporates algebra and geometry. What we're really confident in right now is we're going to go K to eight. But the challenge is the timing of it. So if we started seventh and eighth graders with this style next year with K to six, they would move on to a high school where this strategy is not being used. And it really doesn't make a lot of sense to, to take that all that on at one time. So our plan is, next year, K to six, we'll get them on board. After that, 25, 26, if everything goes the way we believe it will, we're going to implement seventh grade. And the year after that, we're going to implement eighth grade math and algebra at the eighth grade level. All while looking at, are we going to implement this for our T-Son Algebra High School Algebra course? Geometry, we're not looking at. And we're predominantly not looking at it because Big Spring feedback, geometry is a course that a lot of our, our BCDC kids would take. The geometry curriculum for that is very, very heavy, like college-based but not application-based. So it is not, we can actually provide a more applicable geometry for our learners than what that current curriculum will give. So we're going to evaluate that. But even more exciting, we're currently trialing a science resource with the new skill standards at second grade, fifth grade, sixth grade, seventh and eighth grade. The cool part about that, at least in our nerdy minds, is that the science resource that we're using is rooted in problem-based, phenomena-based research, and it is also rooted in the universal design of learning. So the way we're going to be teaching math is the same way we're going to be teaching science. And it's going to be really nice to have that aligned. Blessings. So ultimately, right now, we're trialing that. We're very excited about that. There's been a lot of professional learning in those grade levels. Next year, I hope we go expand that. And if all goes well, we would have, a good portion of the kids, they were there. They're doing some really neat and intense.
Are they actually trialing it in the classroom?
Yes, yes. Now, let's talk numbers, right? When we, when we look at this, next year to get teacher manuals, student supplies, and classroom kits of manipulatives, all the tangible stuff would cost just under $50,000 to implement. The only thing that would be non-renewable in this situation is the student notebook. Student notebooks or workbooks are $27 per year compared to currently, our Envisions books are $40 a year. So year to year, we're actually spending less money. Professional learning, again, the critical aspect of this going well requires us to have professional learning to support our teachers. I have professional learning quoted out for March, April, May, and then in August by an I, an Lester Math certified professional, which is $13,000. But Wilson has an Lester Math certified person. And we've actually sent a lot of teachers to him for professional development through the IU. And we're going to try to cherry pick, because we know he's high quality and we know he does a nice job. But all in all, for this implementation, it's, you know, just under $63,000. When we went into Envisions eight years ago, we were in the upper seventies. So again, all things considered, we feel like this is a far better product for our learners. And it's coming at a price that we feel is, is definitely, definitely unpossible.
That's part of our budget, my idea.
Hundred percent, yes. Now, the only thing that's not budgeted year to year, obviously, is like implementation fees. But the $49,000 to get everything is, I think that's pretty, I was expecting a lot more. So ultimately, takeaways for all learners, these are the things that you've kind of repeated. You know, we want to transform math instruction from mimicking to understanding. It's not just regurgitating and solving step-by-step equations. It's using your brain to solve complex problems. Proving again, from recipe-based solutions to real-world problems. Creating learning environments where kids are actively discovering and building their understanding instead of just passively receiving information. And even more so, this ties in with our portrait of a Trojan. We want to encourage learners to view challenges as opportunities for learning and growth and foster resilience and perseverance. Right now, in math classroom, if a kid doesn't know the next step, you'll see them stop, wait, and have to get confirmation from a teacher before they move on. We don't want that. We want them to just intently, just like intensive, just go through that. And if you're concerned if you mess up that step, try to blow through it anyway. See what you come up with. And don't be afraid of making a mistake to the point where it just halts your progress. And we feel like this will, this will allow us to do that. So I know that a lot of questions were asked throughout. So are there any remaining questions or concerns or things that you would like to see as we move forward?
I would like to see it work as good as you described it.
If you can make that happen, I'll be happy. Yeah, we, we were very excited about it. Going, seeing it, it spring growth. I mean, it was, it was everything we thought it would be. Now the goal is supporting our teachers so that they feel confident and ready for the challenge. And I know they can do it. We just got to make sure that we support them and we take the steps necessary to make it successful. And thank you.
All right, items for board action. We're going to skip over A and B. Mrs. Parsons.
Uh, move that we approve the agreement with the law firm, Howells Stout, to provide services at the school districts.
Next second. Any comments? I believe I saw in our emails that he agreed to freeze the price, a slight increase in year three of the proposal. Is that accurate?
Yeah. So year one, two are the same, and then year three, there's an $100 increase.
Just understand a lot for three-year.
It is three.
Three-year, that's not going to be fun.
Any other comments? Roll call.
Kester.
Palmer.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feiler.
Yes.
Brismiller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Hoplin.
Yes.
Uh, do you move that we approve the appointment of the engineering firm or the engineering and associates to do a review of the kissing property in the amount of $7,700?
Next second. Any comments?
Yeah, what are they reviewing?
Um, as part of the agreement of sale, there is highway occupancy checking to make sure there's no chemicals that were buried on the property.
So when they check for highway occupancy, does that mean they check with PENDOT to see if a highway occupancy permit could be obtained in the future?
Yes.
I don't know that they actually check with PENDOT. They review it to make sure it meets the specs for PENDOT. I don't think they actually go to a review process with PENDOT.
I don't know if that would be a level one environmental, if I have it correct.
As well. So it does assume, uh, it's project management overall. It looks at the recorder deeds, the bounds of the property, the entire track of land to make sure everything is legally exists. There's no liens, there's no anything. It looks at all the public records, permeable testing or hydro geological testing. Uh, as far as the agreement of sale, there was language in there for flood zone, a floodplain to see if there's, we know it's in a floodplain. So a lot of it is just to make sure there's nothing buried underground, that if we needed to do the highway occupancy or that we would have any issues with it. Usability, liens, et cetera. They do kind of the comprehensive study of what it is.
Any other?
Right, it's for.
It's absolutely for, yes. Any other comments? Roll call.
Palmer.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Feiler.
Yes.
Brismiller.
Yes.
Heck.
Yes.
Bats.
Yes.
Hoplin.
Yes.
Kester.
All right, moving on to administrative reports. Mr. Hammond?
Let me just have a couple items. First, I'd like to congratulate the seniors for winning the second quarter pride challenge. Remind you, that's a challenge for our PBI system with attendance, discipline, and academics. The seniors have acted and have been on fire this year. But the juniors are, we will be looking at transitioning that overall pride program to our portrait of a Trojan, wants to get that up and running. So students will emulate those habits and qualities that we're looking for. Lastly, I have a big shout-out to Sam Makowski. She's one of our parent educators. She is so student-forward. She does everything she can. She actually is working on a goodwill program. She's keeping a backup and running for our students to get involved with that. She's also helping out with NAEP test day next week for our seniors. She's a wonderful woman, and she'll do anything for our students. So shout-out to Sam. Thank you.
Mrs. Parsons.
To piggyback a little bit on Mr. Hamrick, the pride student of the month was the high school senior, Dylan Rimby. And the teacher of the month was Mr. Derek Hurd. Also, I was able to attend the BCDC breakfasts in both campuses. For the ladies and gentlemen that came to get their awards, it was a wonderful event. I was very excited to meet them and some of their teachers. And last but not least, we had our winter dance at the high school on January 27th. It was very well-attended. And I wanted to thank the student council, Mr. Chad Sheets, and all the chaperones.
Mr. Lynch, junior high.
Wait for me to follow with, probably correct you.
It's getting late. We got to put a couple punches in there.
Yeah, a punch thrown. So for the middle school, a couple things. So Valentine's Day Dance is Friday, 7 to 9:30. And with the middle school and the student council in March, just a heads up, we are going to be collecting canned foods and just doing a food drive in general. So that between March 4th and March 14th, students and families can bring in their donations. And then student council will be working with Ms. Wallfaser up in the counseling office to reach out to the families similar to, to her ducking and what we did around Christmas as well. So raise, raise some food, you know, kind of packages, if you will, some care packages before spring break, before Easter. Thank you.
Hi. So last meeting, I spoke a little bit about our student leadership team taking on some school improvement. And continuing in that spirit, I wanted to shout out our second graders for funneling their thoughts into positive action. So I've received first base of letters in, you know, the past, asking for more recess, have a movie day, things like that. But I received a first base of letter last week from one of the second grade classes that really stuck with me. And the letter was written asking if students could bring in their own toys from home to play with at recess. And I wrote them back. And at their disappointment, I actually denied their request, citing our school handbook. However, I did pose to them the opportunity to write me back with ideas of things that they would like to have at recess if they could. So in response, I was greeted with this pile of persuasive letters, requesting various items like hula hoops and Velcro catch and toss and jump ropes. I'm sure that would be good practice for flexibility. The chance to play a game with a friend, a great challenge, and even time they could practice and improve their skills. So props to them for providing creative solutions. We put in order today for these items. So I am going to second grade tomorrow to let them know. And I just wanted to share, I love that we're encouraging students to become contributing members to, you know, our society in a positive way.
Mr. Gears.
So this week is National School Council Day. So an exciting event that is going to be happening tomorrow at Bethel Elementary is our first Coffee with the Counselor. It's going to highlight our new elementary school counselor, Ms. Molly Coetz. Her, in partnership with Sheets, are going to provide some donuts and some coffee for parents that have attended. She's going to kind of give an overview of the lessons that she's taught so far to the students and what her curriculum looks like, kind of that open book. She's been a tremendous resource this year. We actually took her office and put it in a classroom. So she has more access to students. Students can freely see her without being called down to the office. And every time I'm down in that hallway, there's kids utilizing her as a resource, or she's hanging out with kids, or having lunch with kids. It's just, it's really nice to see. So I'm hoping we get a really good turnout tomorrow for our first event. And we plan on doing events then every month for the rest of the year.
Mr. Charles.
Good evening. Last month, we met with representatives from the Berks Community Health Center to discuss the Love Miss on Wheels again. That was what we tried last year where they came, they parked at the middle school, high school. They did, I believe it was Wednesday, Thursday afternoons. We met to talk about how we could make that whole successful, how the impact here in the community, you know, really came down to, you know, the middle of the workday was the ideal time for students or families to get medical care, especially if they already have trouble accessing that. So what we did is we really paid, or trying to pinpoint some events that we have that are later in the evening where school or families are already coming into the buildings, already going to be on the premises, to have the bus available then. We did identify the kindergarten registration event that we have in March. They're going to be at both Bethel and PB. So families coming in if they need to get any of the typical immunizations that you would get as you prepare for school, they could get that there. But also just to make them aware of the services. And real quick, I know it was acknowledged earlier, I want to thank you for approving the speech therapist, what Monica called to accept the offer. I'd call Dr. Menzel, I think it probably sounded like a kid on Christmas. I was very excited, so thank you.
Ms. Bryce.
Hello. I just want to recognize, actually, one of the, the people I want to recognize was one of the staff recognized earlier today. But as we continue our search for the learning support teacher for K to three at Penburneville, we have just had some, a really great special in team, including Rob, Megan, Casey, and the parent educator, Lauren. They've really just worked so hard to make sure that they're meeting all the needs of our students. And the students haven't missed a beat. I mean, they've gotten all their services. It's just been a really, a really great thing to see such a strong team work so hard together to, to do what's up for kids.
Ms. Burman?
Anything. It's difficult to stand. I'm sure she'll do it, thanks. All right. I want to give a shout-out to Vicky Delb. She works in the cafeteria over at Bethel. And when we were talking about the crossing guard who was Employee of the Month over at PB, remind me of Vicky. Vicky has gotten into the habit of wearing different food hats. So she has a taco hat, she has a french fry hat, she has a pizza hat. And every time the kids kind of challenge her to find a new hat, she like hops on Amazon and like gets a delivery and then shows up and talks. Another thing I want to mention about Vicky is National School Lunch Week, or Breakfast Week, excuse me, is coming up in March. And I was talking to her about a contest I wanted to do. Instead of a coloring contest, I said, hey, Vicky, I want to do a contest where the kids come up with it, with an advertisement for school breakfast, kind of a different spin. And she said, well, you know what, that would be great, because the kids that don't come down, they're going to have to come down for breakfast now to see what it's all about, to make their advertisement. And we're trying to increase the number of it at Bethel. And I just thought that was so insightful. I hadn't thought about it that way. I have a degree in advertising. That is everything I have for tonight.
Mr. Brown.
All right. Hi, everyone. A couple updates with our winter athletics, high school, middle school basketball is coming to a close this week. We just had two middle school games today. Saturday, there's a middle school boys tournament. And our, our high school boys basketball team have their last game, home game Thursday, which goes to Peckway Valley. Along with that, oh, and our girls' high school team won three out of the last four games. So even though it was a little rocky at times, we ended on a real strong note this year. Wrestling team. Wrestling team, you all have heard about them plenty of times, best team that we've ever had thus far. I expect next year with all starters returning, we're gonna be even better, but we finished the regular, well, we finished season fifteen and five as a team, we are in the number-four seed in district for our boys team. On the ladies' side, Kat Barelli has been rocking, and she's fifteen and two this year, she wrestled in five tournaments, she won three of them, finished second in one and third in another one. Sectionals for boys and girls start on the sixteenth and the seventeenth, so any wrestling fans out there, feel free to join me down in Harrisburg area for those meets. On our performing arts side, Little Shop of Hearts, March eighth and ninth, if you were not aware of those dates. For student activities, Mini-Thon, that's one of the biggest events that the student activities groups have, that is March first. And some shout-outs, I have three that I want to give today. First goes out to Mr. MVP right here himself and his buildings and ground staff. We had our Trojan Duels tournament, ten-team wrestling tournament on the twentieth. The night before, we had a beautiful snow with a little bit of ice that came down, and Matt and his crew inside and outside, I mean, it was just amazing how they had the high school cleared and ready to go for ten high school wrestling teams. So we were talking two hundred people easily in our building, traveling to our building. And it was, it was a great day, great day for the wrestlers. Next up, I want to give a shout-out to the high school basketball team, this is mainly from what I witnessed working with our youth, which I think is crucial in developing a real good program. This weekend, I saw our girls' coach was at our youth clinic, talking with our youth players, my daughter, my youngest daughter was one of them, so I was able to see that firsthand, and then we had numerous high school boys players that coached at the clinic and also refereed the games afterwards, which again, I think that's just an awesome culture that is starting to be built. Last but not least, a young man in our school district named Landon Yous, he did something I think is phenomenal, it was actually back in December. I didn't find out about it until, until about three weeks ago, but I wanted to tout him, I think this is just awesome. We finished a wrestling match, varsity wrestling match, after that match was finished, just typically win some extra JV matches and let not occur. And the school had a student with special needs that doesn't typically get, typically gets bounced. Landed finished his match, he's a varsity wrestler for us, he went back out on the mat, wrestled this student with special needs, he did a phenomenal job, letting him take him down, sparring with him, taking the student down, it was just, it was really, really cool to hear all the feedback on it, and I just wanted to give him a shout-out because I just think that's, what more could you ask for from a Trojan? So, thank you.
Mr. Maddick.
So updating math and literacy committee work, Dr. Perk and our coaches already turned in our homework for math, so I'll just get right to literacy. On the fifteenth of January, Doctors Shainley and McGee led a ninety-minute professional learning session for us on our professional learning day in the engagement thread of this year. So they explored the three realms of engagement and ways to build joyful learning experiences, since that is tied to our literacy vision, which explicitly calls out the finding joy in reading. The committee itself met at the end of last month to review what we've already done and what we still have left to do in terms of action steps. We decided that we're gonna try and use our remaining meetings for this year to start working with our partners on the K-12 skill progression that's called out in the plan for phonics, fluency, vocabulary comprehension. I anticipate that's going to take us into next year, which is still within the parameters that we had set in terms of timelines, and I'll not worry about that, and it gives us a little bit of a buffer to do some of the other things that we're trying to work through with math without trying to overburdening everybody, especially K-6, with new math for our grade pen, trying to tackle major things at the same time. And then lastly, just in mid-January, Bethel and Penverville had their MTSS data meetings, I just wanted to take and recognize the passionate and productive work that all of our staff did in terms of coming together and looking at the data, but especially our coaching team and the time and energy they put into preparing for that work. The meetings last about ninety minutes each, but the team puts in a lot of time and energy ahead of time to make those run quickly and smoothly. By and large, good meetings, and I just wanted to give the board a quick sample of some of the data that we end up coming out with. So we had an eight-week period from the beginning of the year until basically the end of December, where we were doing interventions, and then this time, we look at the data that's more up-to-date and make decisions on who can move or who needs to move up in terms of their intervention tiers, who can move back down because they don't need as much help anymore. So just as a snapshot, we have one hundred and seventy-three intervention slots that are currently being filled. I'm saying slots because some kiddos are getting both literacy and math, so they'd be double-counted in there. We have seventy-nine-four in literacy and seventy-nine in math. And between the September and January's data meeting, we have thirty-seven learners who moved up to a more intensive intervention from where they were, and twenty-nine that moved back down, needing less help than they were needing before. And many of the remaining, sixty percent kind of in-between those two bookends, we're seeing good scores and good progress, they're just not quite at a point where we feel comfortable that they could come back down to a lower level of intervention yet, so we'll continue to monitor that as we go on. So again, kudos to all the staff members who participate in those conversations, and especially our coaches who help facilitate a lot of that.
Mr. Schirker, Dr. Perk, do you have anything to add?
Yep, I'm gonna tag along actually with Trevor. The Friday night that we came in, we cleared the snow, the team was here till around eight-thirty. Without me even asking Alan, I just wanted to shout-out to Alan for the air, volunteer to come in, and the next morning, early salt of the physical parking lot, check all the sidewalks. He's been an absolute great addition to the team, always looking at what extra he can do for the department and for grounds, has a lot of great ideas, and it's been, been a pleasure to work with him. Over the last two weeks, if you're on that side of the building, you'll notice our carpet got replaced, so I wanted to give a shout-out to the crew, I basically turned them into furniture movers the last two weeks. There was a lot of furniture that was moved, and the carpet install guys did a wonderful job as well, carpet looks really well, were really, really good. They had to finish up some coat molding, we had to do the bus area, and it wrapped up other than the new area, so that went really well for us. Cynthia Boyer, her last day is tomorrow, so happy birthday to her and happy retirement day to her, and a small party to get together for at the end of the day, so it's exciting times, and thank you for her service. And then to piggyback on the high school dance, Lori and Justin gave a shout-out to Mr. Keith, they said how excellent the kids were, how excellent the decorations looked and how well it worked. They said they were out of there, it was about an hour after the dance, so the kids did a really nice job cleaning up and helping so that they didn't have to stay there all day, so that was great as well. Thank you.
Any else, Dr. Perk?
I was gonna go through my math presentation again. In lieu of that.
He's got a science one.
Couple, couple times tonight, we referenced the Portrait of a Trojan, so I did want to give you an update because I'm pretty excited about where we're at with that. So as a committee, as a committee, we've identified our five habits, last meeting, last month, we defined those five habits, and then this month, we're gonna come together, we're gonna create I-statements with respect to what does that look like at a personal level. This has been a complete, community-engaged event. Last year, we told you our hope is to present this to you in May and try to get some board, you know, representation and support behind it, and I'm hundred percent confident that we are going to hit that with something that I think exceeds what we envisioned in the first place, so I'm super pumped about that. We're gonna take the next two months to refine the image and some of the wording, but come May, we're gonna present to you what the Portrait of a Trojan is, and we're just thrilled. So I wanted you to know that, I think I'm speaking on behalf of the committee, but awesome work has been done.
All right. Anybody have any holdups?
Is there any ETA on the playground?
Over.
Or is it just on a holding pattern in this place?
I know we're on a holding pattern.
Did anybody ask for a playground in their letter to this team?
So how did Hedrick and Bass' transportation facility hold up during snow removal?
Well, we had some issue with some stones, obviously going out, we're extending the parking lot at this point. We did have a rut that formed. Fortunately, Dennis has been my go-to escalator and filled that in within a couple hours, so, no, pretty well.
Was it, was it a learning curve?
It took longer than I think they expected, but it went.
So if they have any new business. Sure, Dr. Nezner and Mr. Brown, one of the things I'd like to see, probably a little bit of a personal thing, is that we look at our athletics and our coaches and try and uniform them a little bit, to brand them to a Trojan, as you say, the Portrait of a Trojan, Portrait of a Coach Trojan, maybe get them some follows, some gear, and brand them to a dress code that is uniform across the district for athletic-specific events.
They used to be years ago.
I know.
When I was in school, they all had, they all looked the same, you could all tell who the coaches were.
We, I think we've kind of got away from it, and it's probably a personal pet peeve, but I think they're a leader, they're the face of the district walking into a building, whether it's our building or another district, and that. Also tasking on looking at our coaches and respective to all of our other coaches around, now that he has a year under his belt, to kind of make sure that we have the best coaches that we can have for our students, and to reevaluate that, go through that. So I encourage, you know, when we set down committees, the extracurricular, I know Mr. Fox is the chair, try and get him to kind of facilitate that with you, and branch reports back as your progress. Anyone else have anything? Calendar events is listed there. Valentine's Day is upon us.
FFA breakfast, I did, I just hear supply and buy.
I should have been bringing strawberries or some, that's like a strawberry or something.
They were like belly-date strawberries.
Mr. Landon Davis is a heck of a salesman, I have no intention of buying strawberries, walked out with two cases.
And that, that case was big, I think they had eight of them.
Oh, mine are the exact amount, mine must be for next time.
Oh, no, no, the last time they sold them, they were, they were good strawberries.
Mine are also strawberry, so they don't hurt anyone, but.
Is there anyone wishing to address the board this evening? So thank you guys for staying. Normally, we don't play this late, sometimes we do. Thanks for staying and joining and learning. It's encompassing.
I'm waiting to hear that science presentation.
Are you waiting for the science presentation?
I can, I can.
Don't, don't, don't encourage. So we will be having executive session for legal and personnel looking for a motion adjournment. All those in favor, give a, say an aye.
You're gonna learn a lot about.
No, push, uh, meaning adjournment.